Mike, are you on?
I'm here.
Do you want to, do you want to get started?
Sure, I wasn't sure, does council call to order normally?
No, this one's all you, my friend, but I can call it to order if you'd like.
So we called to order and then we're going to read the public hearing item into the record. So we called it order at 7:03.
Yep, so let me get it, that's if I have, hold on, the presentation, I need the agenda item, I mean the agenda.
Yeah, it's the, the public hearing item is listed with all the budget lines, if you want to read it into the record.
Yeah, so we're going to call this, the town, well, it's actually a public hearing for the town manager's recommended budget to order at 7:03.
Great, hi everybody, Mike Rosen, Town Manager speaking, thanks everyone for being here. I just want to read into the record why we're here tonight, so this is the Town Manager's Recommended Budget Public Hearing. The way on the agenda it reads the line items that the 2020 to 2021 budget as proposed by me, Town Government in the amount of $12,357,640, Capital Improvement Reserve Fund in the amount of $92,567, Board of Education in the amount of $40,117,290, and Debt Service in the amount of $4,600,000. For a total proposed budget for fiscal 2020 to 2021, $57,167,497. And we're here tonight to, I have a presentation that I put together that I'm going to use the screen, the Zoom software to go through the PowerPoint. This PowerPoint is sort of a graphical way of showing what I've put in some of the budget documents in the previous Town Council packet, as well as amends the March 4th original recommended budget pre coronavirus. So this, a lot of these figures amend the figures originally presented back in March to the council pre COVID-19. And I also wanted to mention that this process, this public hearing, is actually spelled out in our town charter. So even with everything going on with executive orders and suspension of in-person meetings, we still wanted to have this public hearing since it's an important part of our process for not only the council but for the public to have an opportunity to talk about the budget. And after this, tonight's meeting and after our discussion, Monday night, June 8th, the council will be deliberating on the budget. So this is sort of one of the last opportunities to talk about the fiscal 2020, 2021 budget before it goes forward for final presentation and adoption later in the month. We do have to wrap this up in June though, as we are obligated by executive order to finish our budget process by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. And if all goes well, we should have it done by June 25th, I believe is our final day. I also wanted to take an opportunity, I see we have a good amount of people on the line and several of them are town staff and department heads and I just wanted to give them their recognition that thank you all for being here tonight, staff and department heads. We are here as one unit that have, this budget has been talked about at length with every department, including the schools. I see Dr. Willet's here as well, thank you for being here. And we look forward to having a discussion tonight on the budget. And this includes the capital, the operating, debt service, and the town and the Board of Education budgets. So let's get started here. So this is a slide that I had used a few weeks ago in a previous presentation, but just to recap, in the case there are people here tonight that weren't on that last presentation, what we strive for and what we're legally required to do every year is put together a balanced budget. And very, what that means, the sort of budget 101 is that as a municipality, our revenues have to equal our expenditures. So on the revenue side, we raise property tax from residents and commercial properties. We look to state aid, including the obviously education state aid that we look, you know, we need every year to operate the schools, as well as other forms of state aid such as municipal stabilization, town aid, road, and local capital improvement aid. We also receive investment income from investments and throughout the year that we earn interest on. And local receipts is sort of what we, the fees for service that we charge in our, you know, whether it's fees for dog licenses or library overdue books or you name it, you know, whatever you're using a service of the town that has an offset to it, like that's where local receipts comes into the equation. Expenditures obviously are payroll, so all the town and Board of Ed staff payroll and also their insurance and benefits, materials, utilities, fuel, programs and services, and capital projects. These are all the expenditures that we pay for on a yearly basis. And that bottom paragraph there talks about if revenues do not offset expenditures properly or in a one-to-one basis, there is the need to use fund balance to cover any remaining costs at the end of the fiscal year. So it's worth noting that the Town of Tallinn, like most or I would say all other communities, plans to use some portion of our fund balance to cover any expenditures that may not have either an offset or just maybe at the end of the year, we just come up a little bit short. But we plan to use some portion of our fund balance to offset some expenditures, but just what is needed to cover expected cost gaps. And the thought here is we want to ease the burden to the taxpayers as much as possible. We're going to talk about fund balance again a couple more times throughout this presentation, but it's something that's come up, you know, almost every year about should we use more fund balance? Can we use more fund balance? And the town's approach is, you know, to do it sparingly and only as needed basis. But we'll talk about that because that's more for obviously normal years and right now we're in sort of a strange COVID-19 world that we're living in. So oops, sorry. So there are seven major revenue categories, as I touched on, there's property taxes, state federal grants, licenses, permits and fees, charges for services, investment income, and education grants and contribution from fund balance. So the, this chart here shows a three-year revenue comparison from fiscal year 18, 19 through the present fiscal year and the proposed fiscal year. And as you can see on our property taxes, that's the main component of our revenue stream, 80.57%. Grants make up some percentage points, but the big one there is the education grants, which at $9,114,000 this year, that's built into our budget, that's almost 16% of our total budget. That's a pretty large chunk compared to all the other things on the screen there, including investment income and of course contribution from fund balance. It's also worth noting on this slide, on that third column in the proposed 2021 budget, you'll see that this year on the last line where contribution from fund balance is actually elevated higher than we are used to. Looking historically, our fund balance usage is more in the $200,000 to $300,000 range. More recently, it's been closer to $300,000. We did propose in order to create a balance, sorry, to create a budget that has a no mill rate increase to the taxpayers, we are proposing using more fund balance in this fiscal year 2021 to just help us out here to try to make ends meet without affecting the taxpayers. Otherwise, we don't, the guidance we were given by the council was to strive for a no mill rate increase. So that's what this budget is, we have put forward a no mill rate budget. This is the trends in our revenue sources, it's another depiction of the previous screen. So as you can see over time, we do rely heavier and heavier on property taxes, that's the blue chunk. And the red chunk is state aid, which has for the most part decreased, although as you can see in the last couple of years, there was a dip and then a raise back up. But that has to do with more of an accounting mechanism, it wasn't actually a decrease, it was, it was still, I'm sorry, it wasn't actually an increase, it was still a decrease. And then the green portion is other sources, which is investment income and local receipts and things like that. So the table illustrates the percentages of the budget funded by the various revenue sources over the past 10 years. And local property tax and state aid are the main component of these sources. And there's some other language down there, but basically this is, we're heavily reliant on property taxes and then state aid. This is a pie chart that shows sort of where all the revenue comes from. Property tax is 80%, educational grants is the green chunk there, 16%. You can look at the pie chart there, there's some other things that are spelled out. But you know, obviously property taxes make up 46 million of our $57 million budget. So again, very heavily reliant upon that and feel free to take a look at this chart. And let's move on to the next slide here. So on the expenditure side of the equation, we have four major categories that are every year for our expenditures. We have town operating, school operating, debt service, and capital improvements. This chart's a little hard to read, if you zoom in with your screen, maybe you can take a better. Of course, this presentation's also available on the town website if you want to take a look and try to digest it a little bit better at home. But as you can see, the government, the town government portion of this is about 5.46% and the general government, planning and development is less than a percent. And you know, it's, it's, Public Works is about 8%, Public Safety Services is about 3.7%. So the town departments are sort of your smaller departments, obviously Public Works and, the Public Safety Departments are the larger ones, they have the more staff and overhead and things. But most of our departments are quite small and many of them are even just two to three people and that's it. So we don't have large bloated departments in Tallinn. Our total town operating percentage is 21.62%. The Board of Education operating expenses is about 70.17%. Debt Service is about 8%. And then our capital improvements are a very small percentage. This year, we're proposing just a very modest 0.16% increase in capital improvements, which translates to just $92,000 or so on the general fund impact. So it's relatively small dollars for capital improvements. On the expenditure, here's a similar pie chart that shows the different expenditure categories. So the larger purple slice is the Board of Education's budget. Town operating is the 12 million number that I talked about before. Debt Service is $4,600,000 and Capital Improvements is $92,567. These are the same numbers that are read into the record as part of the agenda tonight. So these are the categories that the council and the public are going to be speaking about tonight. And I also like on this slide that we put in about what the property tax impact would be for some average assessments for home values in town. We do include this chart every year. And what you'll see here is that in fiscal 1920 versus fiscal 2021, we're building in a no mill rate change, so $36 or $36.05 per 1,000 of assessment. We're keeping that rate the same as part of my recommended budget, which shows that if you have a property that's in the lower, the medium, or the high range of property values in town, that last column on the right shows sort of what you can anticipate as your property tax change year over year. So don't forget fiscal, or 2019 was a revaluation year. So there may be some just changes due to your property changes as well. The only way to really find out what the impact to your taxes will be is to use the tax calculator that's either on the town website or to multiply your assessed value by 36.05 per thousand of value. So you can use the calculator to help you do that. But as you can see, if you have somebody, if you're somebody who owns a home in that lower range, you should expect something in the neighborhood of about a $450 increase to your taxes. But if you're someone who's in the medium range or should expect a tax decrease, and if you're somebody who's in the higher range, you should also expect a tax decrease just based on revow and the mill rate this year. The next slide is a chart of all the, it's the general fund budget summary. So total town appropriations, which is that middle line, is going up 0.7%. And that includes everything all built in together. The categories specifically are Town Government is going up 1.91%. Board of Education is 0.35%. Together, that averages to 0.72 because obviously the Board of Ed is a lot larger entity than the town. So that, that brings that total down to 0.72. Debt Service is going up very modestly at 1.10%. Capital Improvements is decreasing this year because of, we had budgeted more last year and it's less this year. And a lot of that was due to changes that we tried to do in light of COVID-19 and trying to fund some capital projects out of savings from this year and getting them out of the capital plan for next year. So capital, we're going to touch on again pretty soon. On the revenue side, you can see that, you know, revenues are anticipated to increase as 56,772 goes up to 57,167. You can see that we've had some impacts due to crumbling foundations, those reductions there, motor vehicle supplement, excuse me, there's been some other changes with assessment appeals and corrections in the senior tax relief program. But at the end of the day, this is the balanced budget we talked about. This is the 36.05, the mill rates are not increasing. The total town revenues of 57,167,497 are being offset by the total town appropriations of 57,167,497. And you can also see this builds in that $600,000 number of fund balance usage, whereas in the past we've been in the $300,000 or so thousand range. And that's also something that happens at the end of the fiscal year, even though we do budget for it at the beginning of the year. If there's changes in the middle of the year or anything that happens, such as like a, yeah, this year we had COVID-19 happen. So inherently, there were going to be some program savings because a lot of our assets have been closed for the last couple of months. So for example, whereas we budgeted last year to use $300,000 of fund balance, we actually did not use any fund balance this year in this fiscal year that we're ending on June 30th. So there are changes that can happen midstream. But we are anticipating using 600K next year just because we're trying to make a no mill rate increase and still trying to give you the services that everyone's come to expect and enjoy from the town. This shows a little bit of historical mill rate change and again, it's a tight, it's a bit of a tight chart here. It's hard to kind of see it and I'm going to be squinting here myself. But the, as you can see over time, our mill rate sort of steadily increases, usually by about 2% a year. There was a couple of odd years where we had larger percentage changes and stuff. But generally, we're trying to, you know, keep the mill rate something that's more steady, that people, that's modest and predictable, so people can, you know, expect what their taxes are going to be year over year. There was that big outlier in 2015, 16, which was a revow year and there was that big 7.44% mill rate increase. And you know, this, I forgot to mention it at the beginning of this budget. If anybody doesn't know, this is actually my first presentation of the town's budget to council and to the public. So you know, I was tasked with a very difficult thing where we, we came to the council with a, with a budget back in March, which was good for the budget, good for the town at that time. And we really had to very quickly go back to the drawing board, talk to all the department heads and all the staff and make some really quick changes in order to make this no mill rate budget work. So as you can see in the last couple of columns, we're striving for a no mill rate increase this year. I've said it a few times now, just going to take a drink of water quickly. So this was a slide that I had in some previous things too, but these are the factors that drive mill rate growth. Salary increases, contractual increases for services, debt, program costs without an offset, reallocation of other revenue sources, such as in this case, I'm talking more about like state aid as it's reallocated out of Tallinn into other communities. We have to make up for that somewhere. Loss of grand list value due to crumbling foundations or anything else, revow. And then prior years' usage of fund balance as a revenue source is something that can drive the mill rate higher. You know, like I mentioned earlier, even though in good years, we tried to do about $200,000 to $300,000 of fund balance in our modeling, it's not something that's sustainable to just say, let's close any gap with fund balance usage. There has to be some sort of expenditure decrease or, or revenue increase to offset usage of fund balance over time. And you may make some of that back up due to attrition or due to savings throughout the year. But it's not something that you can just say, okay, I need to make up a million dollars, let's pay cash for that. You know, we don't have that sort of ability in Tallinn to do that. So we do absolutely have the ability to go to 600,000 though this year, and that's what we are recommending. Just a little bit more conversation on fund balance. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends fund balance reserves to have an unassigned, undesignedated fund balance of either two months of operating revenue or expenditures, or operating expenditures. Our balance is below this level, but it's within our policy limits. The town's fund balance policy states that overall fund balance shall be between 10 to 17% as a percentage of gap expenditures with unassigned fund balance being in a range between 10 and 15%. So that's, that's the range that, you know, that I've heard is best practices, where we strive to make sure we're between that 10 and 15%. That's what makes sure is that we stay in the AAA bond rating category and also have reliability when people, you know, look to Tallinn to borrow against our capital projects and things. So this is something that I would not want to jeopardize our fund balance, our undesignedated fund balance being, being between 10 and 15%. If it does fall below 10%, there is a, our policy does speak to that and we can't use fund balance until the fund balance is built back up so that any use will not lower the threshold below that 10% again. So there's kind of like a stop the bleeding, stop gap measure in place where if it goes below the 10%, we have to automatically start building back up to 10% again. And with that said, I wanted to show some of the fund balances over the, over time. So the estimated unassigned fund balance amount of 8.7 million for fiscal year 1920 assumes that fund balance will increase by 1,235. This amount includes an estimated return of funds from the Board of Ed of almost $900,000. This was due to the savings from the COVID-19 pandemic situation. And the town also has savings of about $211,000 as well as excess revenues of $124,000. So although fund balance will increase, we anticipate there will be an allocation of the 399.756 to the Board of Education's 1% reserve fund, as we had talked about during our joint meeting with the Board of Ed a couple of weeks ago. So we are, like I said, that bold paragraph there, as a percentage of gap expenditures, assuming that we're using $600,000 in fund balance next year. The plan is to reduce that over time so that we can sort of, you know, in a professional way, we want to go back to a lower number, but we can't do it all in one shot because it would be a large burden and we'd have to probably raise taxes to do that. So we're talking about sort of a systemic approach to lower the fund balance usage over time. The, that little chart down there too shows where the percentage of fund balance as compared to the, the amounts of the 10 to 15% range we talked about earlier. So right in 18, 19, we were at 13%, which is obviously between 10 and 15. 1920, because of the savings we've had this year, it's going to be closer to the 15, it was 14.08. Next year, we will be going down due to the usage of fund balance that we, we've built in, the $600,000 usage, plus anything else that might be used out of the fund balance, such as I know we still haven't settled the idea about buying a fire truck out of cash. So something to consider, that will actually decrease our percentage lower as well. Now to move on to the capital budget, a lot of these slides are similar from February when we did talk about the capital budget, we had the public hearing back in February. There have been some changes to the capital budget since then. The methodology is still the same. So everything the town does from providing services to its residents and citizens, to giving employees effective, the equipment to perform their jobs, requires certain basic physical assets. So streets, parks, buildings, school facilities, large equipment and technology. Assets must be purchased and maintained on a timely basis or their useful lives and usefulness will diminish. And we do have a five-year capital improvement program, which was submitted back in February. Obviously tonight, we're going to focus mainly on fiscal year 2021 because that's the year that's on the table at the moment, the out-years are not on the table at the moment. But it's a good idea to have a rolling five-year capital plan to ensure that investments in the future, the town assets are going to be replaced in an orderly basis. And that way you can also look out a few years to see what's coming down the pipeline. So you can either spread big purchases out so that they don't all come into the same fiscal year because that could spike the mill rate or usage of fund balance. Instead, you want to sort of smooth it out over time so that large purchases are spread out over the five-year plan. So what is a capital item, in case anybody might not know? It's any project that falls into the category of being any new or expanded physical facility, any land or property acquisition or items of a non-recurring nature where the benefits are realized over a long period of time. And generally, what we strive for is a project that is, has a useful life of greater than eight years and has a cost of at least $10,000. So that's sort of the two checkboxes we consider when we want to decide if something's capital or operating. If it's a long useful life and if it's expensive, then we usually go with the capital program. There's a lot of ways that we fund the capital program. Mainly, the first couple of the ones, they're the general fund contributions, which this year amount to $92,567. There's also what's called the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, which is a non, it's a, it's a fund that doesn't get replenished very often and what we have in there doesn't come back easily. So we do recommend using that fund from time to time and we're going to be recommending using it tonight for a few things, which we'll get into in a moment. But just got to be careful with that because even though it's not general fund cash, it's not something that's replenished. Non-referendum notes, that's, you know, that's, that's your non-referendum bonding. We do receive some state aid as well from, from Local Capital Improvement Plan and Town Aid to Roads Grants, which we are budgeting in this year, projects that fall under both of those categories. Those are the type of projects where if we don't get the funding, we don't do them. But we did just recently find out about a month ago that we do have the commitment from the state for the next year that we're going to be getting these grants, that's not changing even with COVID-19. So, so that's good. We also get state school construction grants and, you know, that's one of the big things right now that I'm working on in my office, as well as many other people probably on this call, is Birch Grove. And school construction grants is very important that, you know, to make sure that we get the school up and running and constructed properly. Ambulance fees of which come in whenever the ambulance is utilized and the public safety officers go out and save somebody or help somebody, triage somebody. That money can go into an account and can be used for purchases, generally by the Public Safety Department. So that's something we're going to talk about in a few moments. Cemetery funds, referendum borrowing, unallocated capital, Recreation Special Revenue Fund and Utility Reserve Fund round out the last couple of funding mechanisms. So our next couple of slides have to do specifically with the Town of Vernon Water Pollution Control Plant upgrade. I did give more of a lengthy presentation on this back in February and honestly, I haven't thought too much about it in the last few months, but it's something we do have to fund, it's a, it's a commitment that we're making and we do have to fund this project. So it's, it's something that, you know, I, we have some numbers here, but the total project cost is $81 million. And the town, the town share of that is, not, not the full $81 million, it's obviously it's spread out amongst the few towns. Allington, South Windsor, Manchester and Tallinn all have an intermunicipal agreement. So our portion is a lot lower than the full portion, but we still do, oh, we still do have to buy into this. So our, our contribution is based on a formula, as you can see on the bottom of the screen there. And when you do the math on it, and thanks to Lisa and to the folks who did the math on it, our share is about 5.63% of the total $81 million cost. So that means over 20 years, our project cost is estimated at about $3.3 million. That's based on the 5.68% like I mentioned before. Fiscal year 2021, the general funding portion is $38,148, but we're using a pretty hefty, almost $100,000 from the CNRE and $55,000 from available monies that we're going to be putting towards this. This was, this was planned this way, we are budgeting, we're trying to ease the impact to the general fund, but we, you know, by not putting the full hundred and, or two, almost $200,000 in, to the general fund this year. But eventually, after the next, I think, I believe it's in two years from now, the full brunt of this will be impacting the general fund in the future. So while we can smooth it over the next year or two using CNRE, Capital Non-Recurring Fund, eventually the idea is to build up to a position where we're going to be ready to take on the full load on the general fund. And it's going to take a few years to phase it in. This is the second year of phasing of this plan. As you can see from that final bullet, Town Council approved the resolution to deposit almost 300 grand into the capital fund, non-recurring fund, to be used over the three-year period to alleviate the cost of the debt. But that does go away after the third year. So we have to get ready to take it on the general fund. There's some reasons why there, the burden it would replace on the sewer user rate would be substantial and could deter any future commercial growth or lead to commercial businesses leaving Tallinn. School system provides education for Tallinn students and it's one of the major users that is served by the sewer system. The Commercial District includes Big Y, which is obviously very important for all of our, right now with, they're not even usually for shopping, but especially with COVID and everything, they've been very helpful for the community and citizens can shop locally and stay in town to buy all their goods and services. And our user rate is considered to be very high, especially when you compare it to Vernon's, we're like three times Vernon's rate. So we do recommend putting this into the capital, into the general fund after the next two years. So that's, that, that was all about the sewer project. Now we're going to talk about some other projects that are also to be funded by the general fund. So we, depreciation is often, or is usually, So, we, depreciation is often, or is usually paid out of the general fund for like duty vehicles. This year, on the town side, we've got $22,854 plus another almost $19,000 from Public Works and about $12,786 for the Board of Ed vehicles. So, this is something that we do every year. We budget for the depreciation so that it goes into an account that when there's a need to purchase another vehicle in the future, we'll have some money set aside for it and, and ready to go. Especially since it takes a lot of time to sometimes buy vehicles if they're specialized for municipal services and specialized services. We also, speaking of vehicles, the Fire Marshal Vehicle is, if anybody's seen it or been in it, and I know Mr. Littell's on the phone, this needs to be replaced this year. And this is something that, I mean, I've had a lot of conversations about it with various folks and this is definitely the year it needs to be replaced. It's on its last legs. It probably was on its last legs two years ago and we pushed it out. So, originally, we were going to use $20,000 of cash to help buy this vehicle, but we have since moved all the fund, the funding of this to the Capital Non-Recurring Fund. So, it's going to be $70,000 and we do have to order it ahead of time because it's specialized and needs to be built out and equipped with all the fire goodies. So, it's an expensive vehicle, but it's mandatory and it's, it's, Mr. DeBica needs it. The Utility Reserve Fund, which has the balance that's shown there of 357032. There's two projects that are slated to be paid out of that reserve fund this year. The Board of Ed has a water filtration system that is due to be paid for out of that. And also, Public Facilities has an air conditioner unit for the Fire Training Center, which is going to be paid for out of that as well. District-wide BOE parking lot repavement, there's, that's non-referendum debt of $90,000 and that's slated to happen this year. And that's working with the superintendent. We talked about that. There's also a highway truck that services the cemetery that's due to be replaced this year. And I know our Director of Public Works, Scott Lappin's on the line too. And we were good enough, the council had the opportunity to tour all of the public works and fire stations as well, facilities. And we got to see up close and personal all of these assets that are on these, on this page here. More so on the trucks, I guess, because the, the public safety ones are more about equipment. But anyway, the 30, the cemetery truck is due to be replaced this year. It's in pretty rough shape. And the, under public safety, there's two pretty big projects right now. And, and keep in mind, these were projects that were on the docket even before COVID-19 hit. And if anything, you can see that, especially with that second one with a self-contained breathing apparatus. I mean, that's something that the chief needs for his, his public safety officers and volunteer firefighters. And the, this, this is money that's coming out of the ambulance reserve fund to pay for the PPE and the scuba, not underwater, but self-contained breathing apparatus. And again, these were all pre-COVID. So, I don't know if the chief maybe can tell us later a little bit if that changes anything or if these will be used for COVID stuff, but we, we needed these anyway, and maybe that's even amplified more by this, the emergency we have going on, the public health emergency. Public Works also is looking to have non-referendum debt for one of their trucks, number 35, which I believe I have some more information about in my packet. There's also a firehouse improvement design development. So, this is $100,000 that we're asking to be spent on hiring consultants, which again is part of our capital five-year plan that we hire a consultant to design improvements to the fire departments. The, the three of the fire stations to bring them up to ADA compliance and some other things as well, talking about space needs, talking about one of the fire stations which has potential crumbling foundation issues. So, this study will guide the construction and improvements to the fire stations, which will probably transpire in two fiscal years from now. This is the study and the plan to put that construction plan into practice. And we're anticipating it's going to cost about $100,000. And we have been in talks with some vendors about that. And specifically, one of the vendors we have worked with in the past, especially on fire. So, they, they have a good understanding of the project and its needs. So, we're thinking that 100 grand is, is right on the money for what that's going to cost. Also, the Public Works is asking for some capital equipment replacements and some refurbishments. Streets and roads, we, you know, one of the things that the DPW hears a lot about in the summertime is roads paving and when's my road going to get done and stuff like that. So, we have to be, take care, good care of our roads. That includes drainage and, and construction and design, pavement management and road improvements and tree trimming as well. I skipped over that, but that town aid road grant pays for that. So, if you notice, the third and the fourth bullet points add up to a million dollars. And what I've, you know, I'm about nine months on the job now here in Tallinn and I learned that we do spend about a million dollars a year on our roads. And generally, what we do is some of that is in grants and some of that is part of our 5 million bond that got approved back in November of 2018 under the previous town manager. So, the 205, that's going to be grant money and the 795 is going to be part of the bond. And I think the idea here is that you, by, by spreading it out, by using some grant money and then also some bonded money, you might be able to get a sixth year out of it, out of the five, out of the $5 million bond package. We were originally going to be a million dollars a year for five years, but we were probably able to squeeze a sixth year out of that now. So, that's, that's good. And, and as the director will tell you of DPW, even a million dollars doesn't go very far when you're talking about roads. They're very expensive to maintain and to pave and to improve. And we do have a running list that's done, I think there might be a slide on that, maybe not. But there are, there, there's a running list of all the roads in town and how bad a shape they're in. And, you know, even with a million dollars, we might not even scratch the surface on it. So, it's something that is very sensitive because everybody has a vested interest in the roads that they travel and live on, on a daily basis. But we can't, we can't get to them all with just a million dollars a year. So, it's just something to keep in mind as we go along. So, talking about the general fund contributions to the capital plan, there's, you know, I, I've worked in two other communities before I came to Tallinn. And this percentage of what we contribute in the general funds to the capital is considerably low. And I'm not, it's, it's not a bad thing. I mean, we, we got to keep on top of it. But the idea here is that if you don't keep up your capital assets, eventually, things might start deteriorating around you, which can, which can have multiple different effects on not just people's, you know, there's vehicles or potholes, doesn't really look very good. There might be sort of a pride thing where people don't, you know, they would, they don't want their town to look, you know, shabby. And furthermore, you might actually hurt your reliability and bond rating and things. So, it's, it's a good practice to keep up your capital assets because that's sort of the, you know, the gateway to the community. So, so I wanted to just point out that in fiscal year 16, we had, you know, $183,000 that was going to capital contributions. It's kind of gone down over time. And I know a lot of times when budgets are tight and times are tough, capital is one of the things that, that tends to get put on the back burner or postponed or cut. And this year, we're asking for a very modest 0.16% or $92,000 to just keep up those assets that I had showed earlier on the screen for the general fund projects, which is heavily Vernon, Vernon's about half of that, that sewer contribution. So, just keep that in mind, that capital assets are important. And I certainly am very proud of the town I work for and I really appreciate being your town manager. I just wouldn't want to see any, you know, deterioration of things, but I get that times are tough right now. So, something that to think about for the future, hopefully, when we have some better years, that maybe we can invest more in our, in our capital assets. Here's the capital program plan by product, by sort of subject area. And as you can see, a big piece of the pie is streets, road and drainage. And 16% is in capital equipment. 17% is the fire and ambulance projects. That's the PPE and the scuba equipment. Public facilities and tree trimming and Board of Education make up the rest. So, and Town Administration as well. So, let's talk a little bit about debt. And I'll admit, I'm not a debt expert, but I'm happy to kind of go through these slides here. So, fiscal year 2021, our general fund budget's going to be increasing $50,000 to the debt model. So, we're going up to $4,600,000 and we're going to be continuing to go up on debt over the next couple of years. We, much of this is attributed to the Birch Grove Project, which obviously was unexpected, but it's something that we're working through. I'm excited that it's going to be constructed on time and we're working hard on that and working with the state and the council and the building committee and very closely working on that with staff as well. So, the plan will allow the budget to begin being reduced in the future, eventually to get it back down to $4,550,000 and so on. The plan is to begin building capital reserves in the future so we can start paying for projects on a pay-as-you-go basis as debt falls off the books for some of our larger projects that are kind of coming to the end of their debt schedule. So, I wanted to sort of sum up here. I've been talking for a little while now, but I just wanted to say that one-time revenues typically pay for one-time expenses. Recurring revenues should typically pay for recurring expenses. Obviously, this is a year where we have to be creative and flexible for the entire town, which I think we've been doing and we've showed in our presentation tonight. I do believe that using an excessive amount of fund balance would be detrimental to our solvency, but thoughtful usage will help maintain the services and crucial supports that we've come to expect from our community. And definitely, this is the most uncharted waters we've ever been in. It's been quite a heck of a nine months since I've been here. And I don't want to deplete the town savings. Definitely, that would be a bad strategy at the moment, but I think we've come up with a very viable plan that meets the objective of getting to a no mill rate increase while also keeping our, our, our debt in a good shape, our, our borrowing in a good shape and also not leaving, even though with more usage of fund balance, I think we can lean off of it over the next few years and get us back into good shape with that. So, as I mentioned earlier, there's only three more steps for the budget process, which feels like has been going on for almost nine months now. But the Town Council is going to vote to finalize the budget on June 8. What they're doing is they're voting for the, the budget to finalize for presentation, which the presentation is going to be on June 17 on Zoom. But the final, final adoption of the budget and setting the mill rate is slated to take place on the 25th of June after the budget presentation. So, there are a few more opportunities for everybody to come on and listen in to the, the budget process, which is nearing its end at this point. I am interested to hear the council and the public's questions. Our full cadre of department heads and staff are on the line. If, if it's something I can't answer, we will happily answer your questions as a team tonight. And I know the superintendent's on the line as well, although I should caution that generally, our conversations are going to be on the town side budget. But however, the Board of Ed budget is one of the line items as part of the town budget. So, there may be some opportunity to talk with superintendent as well, and I appreciate his being here. So, that is my presentation for tonight. I'm going to stop sharing the screen so I can see everyone's faces. And that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. With that, the next item on the agenda is public participation. And just so to kind of reiterate what Mike said, this is the public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget. So, this is the time when the public can partake, ask questions, stuff like that. All of us counselors are on the call right now with the exception of, I believe John isn't on yet. He is at the award ceremony for the high school, but then he will be on once that is done. But all of the counselors are on, so we will hear your questions and hear the responses and such. And then we will be meeting Monday, the 8th, to talk about the budget and to set it. So, with that said, I think it would probably be best, Mike, if you had a chance to catch your breath there?
Yes.
Drink some water. Okay. Anybody in public that would like to talk, if you are on a device, if you can click the blue button to raise your hand, you will be entered into the queue. If you are on the phone and have a question, it is star nine to get your hand raised and into the queue. When you are, when you are selected, please state your name and address and then the question that you have. So, oh, John is joining now. So, now we have all of the counselors also on too, so they will be aware of any questions that are raised. So, let me just, um, your name. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager? Not seeing any. We'll wait just a little bit and see if anybody decides they have a question. If not, Mike, you're, you got off easy.
Okay. Good night, everybody. Bye.
Done with you. Yes, we're good. Um, anybody? Okay. Doesn't look like there are any questions then from the public. So, I think that's it. This isn't a typical public hearing. We don't have, we don't motion for a public hearing or anything because this is just your presentation. So, we didn't make a motion to go into public hearing or out. So, I think at this point, we would just, Steve, you want to hit the last item on the agenda? You're on mute, Steve.
Yeah, sorry. I was just clicking that. My mouse has been acting up all day. Just pulling up the agenda now. Sorry, I crashed right when I was in the middle of pulling up the presentation. So, are you making a motion to adjourn at 7:48 PM if there's no other participation or questions?
I don't see anybody with any questions. So, that's the only other thing on the agenda. It was Mike's presentation. And then, um, after Mike's presentation, public hearing, I mean, public comment and then adjournment, unless I'm looking at it wrong. Do you have, do you have the thing up?
I have, I have it up. So, yeah. Unless there's any other questions from council members or any of the public, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:49 PM.
Can I, somebody want to second that?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay. I'm all in favor. Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Get on to get off. There you go.
I am so late, everybody.
Uh, Kurt?
Hi.
And I am an I. So, that is unanimous. Thank you all for joining the presentation of the Town Manager's Recommended Budget. And we will be meeting again on Monday for the Town Council to deliberate and decide.
6 PM.
At 6 PM on Monday. Yes.
Monday.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.